Silence and shut off your cell phones, please, and join us in the pledge.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One. Indivisible. And your justice. Were there any additions or deletions?
I have two additions. I have herbicide materials for twenty herbicide program. And Lake County, Lake County Youth Mentoring Program grant request with Oregon Department of Education.
Chair your speakers.
Um, alright, so we'll move on to the first item. Now we have on the list for Kevin Hawk, Rose Superintendent, on surface system treatment oil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, you guys should have in front of you the request for quotes um for Albina asphalt and Idaho asphalt. Um, these two vendors are the vendors available for this region. Two vendors we historically get bids from. Albina, in this case, is the uh apparent low quote. Trying to find my note here. Which I seem to have misplaced. One million ninety-five thousand. So, if you'll notice, if you, if you remember last year's quote, I guess I just wanted to note this as somewhat of a for the product's sake, but also why. We, we have some, uh, you'll see on there CRS three P and CMS three P. So, the, the three in this oil indicates um a little bit more residual asphalt. And since this material is along Christmas Valley Highway where there's much, much higher truck count, we, we quoted out some, I guess if you want to think of it as a heavier oil as it pertains to asphalt content. Normal chip and oil has fifty-eight percent con- content. This will have a little bit closer to sixty-five percent. Oh, ninety-five thousand and sixteen dollars, sorry. I was looking for my actual handwritten note, but right there, I put it on there. One million ninety-five thousand and sixteen dollars.
Gotcha. Or do you, because I know that we haven't gone with Albina typically in the past typically because they weren't proposed better. Do you have any concerns over just them being able to, to work with you and work with Lake County on some of these roads? And given the projects that you're at?
A reasonable question. There's always, there's always concern when you go with somebody historically, but in this case, it's dollars and cents. And part of it, you see, I think, I think you guys should all have it. I actually put the quote in there where you see the verbiage of what our proposal is. In the second part of that, the work schedule proposed. This is a very aggressive work schedule that we're um working at because there's a very, very large quantity of oil. And they have agreed in this work proposal, they can deliver it as we requested. So, I'm, I'm actually pretty excited about the amount of oil we'll be able to put down each day. It, it should, it should really show some improved efficiencies. Christmas Valley Highway doesn't have a lot of intersections or things that really should hold us up.
Right.
So, we should be able to really put a lot of material down and they believe they can get it to us.
With Albina, you got uh quotes for four different, looks like a little bit different mixtures of product there. One coming from Matters and three from Clamor.
So, that's just where the, that's just where the uh um freight is paid from. It's all same, it's all spec the same, it's all.
Okay.
It ha- a lot of times um Idaho would ship from uh White City Plant or from Nampa Idaho. So, it's all, it's all specified material. It's not.
Okay.
And they bid, and the two companies bid accordingly against the specified material. So, they were, they were, they were bidding against apples and apples.
So, if you need the sixty-five percent oil content, it could come from Matters?
It won't come from Matters. The, the higher, the, the heavier oil for layman's terms, uh talking point purposes will come from Clamor Falls. The CRS two P will all come from Matters. That's how they, that's how they bid it by location for the, they, they can't, they can't provide it from Matters, the heavier, higher content asphalt.
Gotcha. So, uh.
They actually broke it down by where they're shipping it from, where Idaho was saying, we're just gonna ship it from Nampa. A lot of times in the past, though, it, it came from different locations. And then gets adjusted later on, you know?
Do you plan to use all four different types or just the three, the three?
No, we'll use, we'll use everything there. The CSS one H, I guess I should have went into a little bit deeper. The CSS one H is the material that we utilize for fog seal. And we'll cut it seventy-thirty or four, uh sixty-forty with water and then we um application rate wise. And, and it's something that I have to see on the road, so I um we plan for sixty-forty cup of that at an eighteen to twenty shot rate, which means that there's eight, uh eighteen hundredths of a gallon going down on a square yard, but that's how that tons come about.
Gotcha. Okay.
So, yes, we will use all of it. The C, the CMS, the CMS three oil is specifically for locations on that road where we're gonna do multiple applications, which I talked about in the road advisory, where we're gonna actually put three-quarter inch material down first. And with this medium set oil, medium set just meaning it takes a little bit longer to cure out, allows for the aggregates to set deeper in the oil. And those locations I have um measured out because they're those sections of route on Christmas Valley Highway are just slightly more deteriorated than the rest of it. For whatever reason, uh they might not have got overlaid in the past or, or something to that nature. Or in this cycle lacked a little treatment the last time, so we're trying to make those sections more durable. That's what that type of oil does. Without, without getting too road technical.
It's all good.
But Albina, or we'd like to proceed um that way because of the um cost. It's uh, they were a difference if you, if you do the math on both quotes, which maybe I, I didn't write on here. There's a difference of just shy of seventeen thousand dollars. Um Albina is cheaper on their quote and um we believe that part of this quote was actually the work schedule itself as well, not just the material. Because it's, like I said, it's typically we shoot three, three to four tankers a day. And this year, we're gonna shoot four for sure and probably like that.
Any other questions?
This is normally about how much we spend a year?
Um, this is a little bit more than, than what we have been spending, but um it's, it's the kind of the theory that we, you know, we talk about in road advisory, pay it now or pay it later is gonna cost you more later. So, we're, we're doing, this oil is going to um service treat from the three ninety-five intersection of Christmas Valley to the intersection where the Chevron is. Plus or minus there depending on, there's some water lines scheduling with the town and some different things that we may have to plan around. And then also there's oil on here, as you read in the work proposed, to surface treat Old Lake Road from um the State's Road thirty-one to the same intersection. At the CB Highway where the Chevron is. But to get all those parts and pieces in one place and then not do this amount of oil doesn't, doesn't help with our efficiency. So, I, I, to do, we need to just do that whole stretch.
Gotcha. Just an update for you. Larry Holmes came from Business Oregon's working on a grant for the folks up in the Christmas Valley Water District. And so, we're hoping we'll get some of that and then they can fix that spot right there on that intersection. And you know, you can work with them on that, but.
Yeah, I, I met with Erica.
Yeah.
I met with Erica the other day, maybe two weeks ago, to discuss what her upgrades need to be. And we'll, we'll try to help and accommodate um at, you know, as much as we can. Why I say that this oil will go plus or minus to the intersection is if, if that or if that water project gets delayed to the point where I'm not gonna put surface treatment down where they wanna dig up. So, and they also have some general maintenance plans to pave that intersection and actually raise it up some.
It is a little, yeah.
And, and the reality is that we'll work with them best we can. Next year's, if you look at the road advisory work plan scheduled, next year's schedule is to go from wherever we leave off this year and just continue right on out towards, you know, the school. So, um it'll either get done this year or next year. But yeah, I met with her, I believe about two weeks ago, I met with her.
Alrighty, um, any other questions? Okay, we can move on to the next, the herbicide materials for like the herbicide project.
So, this, this herbicide material is to finish out our, this current fiscal year's uh herbicide program. If you look at the materials on there, we have a, we have a mix that is the first item on there, milestone, that's what I'm rounding up. That um works good for um selective and non-selective uh material. And then we get some straight glyphosate two-four D um with some residual. And the last item on there you'll see is toward on that um we, we are this year um asking for a little bit more of that because of our vegetation management plans. That we talked about in the road advisory where we're doing a lot more mowing of the right of way. That'll, that'll help us go in where we can broadcast that material and try to keep it held back in the clear zone and in the right of way. So, that, that material is, is not necessarily new, but there's, there's more of it if you look from what was last year to try and control the vegetation in the right of way where we've already done some mechanical management.
So, is that a pre-emergent?
Do you know residual? Yeah, it'll, it'll stay on the ground. And that's, if you look at the first mix, the Accu-Mix, that's what the, that's what the, that mix is kind of designed to do is to catch a little bit of everything. So, it's got selective and non-selective. It has a contact material, so whatever's there gets burnt and, and controlled. But also the residual stays on for like what you're talking about for pre-emergent. It's, it's tough to know exactly when that should be put on. And sometimes I, I will add this, um it, in certain locations, it gets diluted because of pivots and we, we end up having a lot of places in our right of way where we're irrigating right away. It's hard to control vegetation chemically and then have it be diluted away. And we put out this as a, as a quantity quote. If you look on here, um you know, one material might be cheaper from one vendor, um but as a whole, the, the quantity is thirty-four thousand. The quantity quote from Wilbur Ellis is thirty-four thousand three hundred forty-three dollars. So, that's what we would like to move forward with. Um, also, this one would fall in under rule number nine. This material, these are the two historical vendors that are available to make material for us. So, it's, as the rule states, unlikely that encourages any favoritism. There's only so many suppliers that we can work with.
Alright.
And the other thing we did was just worth noting for, for um, I guess efficiency sake, not storing material too long sake, we, we tried to get a lot of this material in uh thirty-gallon containers, fifteen-gallon containers, or these two and a half gallon jugs. And that way, we don't, we don't end up storing large quantities over the season. What we did, we put on the, in the right of way and then we don't end up storing material. A lot of times it doesn't keep.
So, does this, this is including the freight over here?
Yeah, that gets it, that gets it to us and then um that gets it to our door.
I just didn't notice any freight charges in either one of them, so.
Do you have any questions on?
Um, no, uh, other than just the conversation that you and I had had about, you know, one of the issues being that uh you'll still have it, um, and some of these ditches and along the, a lot of these roads, a lot of the product that you spray actually gets washed off because we still have an issue with pivots that are spraying the roads and are right of way.
Yeah, or, I mean, and it is worth noting, I mean, I know this is for approval of this, of this contract, but it's, it's worth noting that some of our, some of our vegetation control gets literally diluted with ordinance twenty-three not always being followed. So, there's, there's road complexities with that, but then also in some cases, we literally are managing a right of way that's being irrigated. Where we're trying to keep vegetation off of it. Irrigation is allowing for vegetation to thrive, so.
Do you have uh news that, uh, you're getting there?
The actual ordinance itself?
Yeah, can you reveal it too?
Yeah, yeah, I keep, I, it's in the, I have it electronically, I pretty sure have it electronically. And then I, I, I keep copies in my truck because I you gotta have it with this all the time. Then there's a hard copy in your road advisory book.
Yes, I think he puts it in the back of the road advisory over here.
But yeah, I have it electronically.
Yep.
And, and um how I think about it, it is, there's a hyperlink to it on the uh website. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, right here. With the rest of, with the rest of our county ordinance is.
Alright. Any other questions on that, on your website?
Me.
Okay, we will move on then to the next item. Which is Jake Greer. Uh, do you have, do you have an update for us?
Yes, if I, if I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll I'll have to hold Jacob, but.
Alright, good.
If I can have five minutes, I'll see you.
So, I'll, I'll let you go.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Alberts and I were talking here the other day to just utilize maybe a little bit of time here for department update on some of the planned work that we have and to discuss some of the concerns, customer concerns and calling complaints for the gravel roads. And so, I thought I'd take just a minute if you guys will allow to have it.
Sure.
Currently, just to give you a department update on our, on our work for the next several weeks, we are kind of finishing up the winter seasonal work with our inline crusher um that is out on Hogback. They're finishing up that, that this week. And we're going to be working on Christmas Valley Highway. There's some, some minor outstanding drainage issues that we're gonna be completing. We will have some cattle guard adjustments on that road um that we got into in depth at the road advisory meeting. But there are five cattle guards on that road that we will be adjusting. We're gonna be putting shoulders on that CB Highway for the um pretty much the entire length from three ninety-five all the way to Chevron. The shoulders on Old Lake Road, we just did not too long ago, so they're, they're in pretty reasonable shape. But all of our work will be in, in North Lake for pretty much the months of April, May, June and July until we get all this prep work done and uh, and uh surface treatment completed. We also are gonna work on Milliken Road. Milliken Road and uh Fossil Lake Road have some low issue, uh, uh low shoulder issues that we are going to. We've saved a little bit of material up there and we're gonna put shoulders on those. Well, I shouldn't say those two roads. We're gonna work on Milliken Road first and as time allows, we'll see where that goes. Fossil Lake Road, though, is, is in the plans for the, the same type of preventative maintenance um work because the edges of our asphalt are starting to deteriorate some uh and they, and that needs to be done. So, just quickly to overview um gravel road maintenance. All these, all these gravel roads get completed in a cycle. And what I mean by, when I say cycle is according to average daily traffic, truck traffic, how much commerce there is on, on that road, especially in the case of North Lake where the economy is commerce, alfalfa, hay on gravel roads. So, cycle pertains to the priorities of those type things. Naturally, a truck traffic route is going to need more maintenance, especially in the gravel world than a, a route that might only have three or four residences on it. Generally, four to six weeks for forty-five days plus or minus, we will have as needed. And I say as needed because sometimes, and we were kind of all chuckling about this, I will get calls that have a concern that, hey, I haven't seen the grader on this road before. I'll go drive the road and it, it really isn't needed. But the concern is, is that from the public's perspective and from their theory of property taxes, they believe that that grader should be running. But the property taxes don't pay for the road maintenance. The, the road dollars do, registration, gas tax. So, some of the concerns where, hey, I haven't seen a grader for, you know, I'll be told three or four months and, and it's not usually that long. And so, it's always, you know, four to six weeks. Even when the road doesn't warrant that maintenance, we're, we're not going to go do that unless it actually is warranted, so. I just wanted, I wanted to note that to include the theory of, there's still a lot of misunderstanding about property taxes and how they're collected, but it doesn't involve the road department. It's registration and gas tax. And then just lastly, on a, on a gravel road, um I think talking point or worth noting, when we're in the summer construction season where we're, where we're installing all this oil and aggregate that we previously were talking about, it takes all my people. It takes literally all, all of our employees, myself included, the office manager flags. It takes every operator that we have. So, there really isn't um graders that are being utilized. Now, I do have two temporary uh operators, one in North Lake and one in Warner, Warner Valley, that in the event that routes get really rough or really washboarded, we'll send them out and kind of knock off the high spots, so to speak, and keep things moving. But so that the public is aware, you gentlemen are aware, that when we're doing the big ticket items of surface treatment especially, there, we're out of people. We literally have no more, so. So, anyway, I wanted to note some of those things. Hopefully that um helps with some of the concerning questions.
Yeah.
And if there's any more from you guys or if you, you heard my um talking points at the road advisory, so if you thought I missed anything, I can include some of that too. Oh, one more thing. Just, just noteworthy, I actually did mark this down to try and remember three hundred, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in calendar year twenty-twenty was spent on man-hours of plating gravel roads. It is a significant amount of dollars that we spend each year on that activity.
What was that, three thirty-nine?
Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
It's a good number, Ken.
And with that, thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Jake, sorry for holding you up.
You're not sorry, so. Good morning, Jake.
Morning, gentlemen. Ms. Hasley.
See you, Kevin.
See ya, thank you.
So, the item on the list is the uh Lake County Youth Mentoring Program grant request for Department of Education.
Yes, um, this little history. This grant used to be run through Commission of Children and Families. That, that uh designed that, that uh that program sunsetted back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and the state decided uh to run it through the county juvenile departments. So, it's money in, money out. And it's used for community providers. When I first took over, we had Lake County Mental Health getting some of the money. We had um Barbara um from uh Lakeview Center for Change, I can't remember her last name. Lakeview Center for Change getting some of the money and then mentoring programs getting some of the money. I got to digging into the work that was being done for the money. At the time, Mental Health wasn't doing anything. And what they were supposed to do was do some juvenile crime prevention assessments, which is a risk needs assessment. Not just on our kids, on all kids between twelve and seventeen. And what that does is it kind of tells you what the risks and needs are and where to focus their therapy and group work on. They weren't, they weren't doing them. And at the time, they were overwhelmed and understaffed. So, they'd have time to do one more assessment. Barbara from Center for Change, she was doing them as she could. Um, again, she was, she was busy, um short staff. Mentoring program, Kathy Miles, was doing them. I talked to Mental Health and Center for Change about picking up those assessments and doing those. I wasn't met with a great deal. Heray will do it. So, um at the time, I made the decision with the board of commissioners to um, to send our money to the mentoring program. Still today, there's, the JCP assessments still need to be done. We do them on our kids. There's a modified version for providers to do the mentoring program until COVID hit and they were, weren't meeting with people. They weren't doing those. So, um on a regular basis and then giving reassessments as they were supposed to. So, um historically, the money was forty-five thousand dollars over the course of two years in the county. Because they sent me the data and I sent in the money for requests for reimbursements. Two years ago, uh for by nineteen twenty-one, the state legislature increased the bottom level number from forty thousand to sixty thousand. My, my assumption is we're gonna remain at the bottom level and the bottom level will remain at sixty thousand. So, that'll be thirty thousand each fiscal year. The county retained three thousand, so that's twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. My hope and intent is um with the Oregon Education Department and Youth Development Council, my hope is with this new online system they have for reporting your, your stats and your uh JCPs for the providers, my hope is that eventually that becomes self-sustainable, so the mentoring program is doing all their own reporting. And we will be somewhere in the picture to help get the plan approved for the county. Because all thirty thousand goes to them, we are, we cut ourselves out. Yeah, three grand is, the, three grand is three grand a year for the county, but at the same time, three grand is three grand for programs that run on grants. So, um I'm not sure when that system's gonna be open and be self-sustainable. So, uh mentoring program can enter all that data and request their own reimbursements. So, for the time being, we'll retain ten percent. So, I went in the packet, I presented um high roll draft, number seven there, which is on uh the last page, statement of lifting to the county government bodies' approval of submitted plan. I'll type something up and give it to Ms. Lasley today, so you guys have that for tomorrow to sign. Um I'll type something up um and give it to Ms. Lasley today, so you guys have that for tomorrow to sign. The reason it's not being taken for lip sync is our lip sync doesn't meet its own maximum and this is due on the thirty-first. So you buy the thirty-first. The budget can be seen on page eight and I've uh spoke with uh Daphne. She listed uh the this this funding, Oregon Department of Education funding funded Oregon early Oregon Early Learning Council. She has listed their twenty-seven thou- twenty thousand dollars, I reminded her, the last couple of years was twenty-seven, I expect it to be twenty-seven again. Uh but we won't know until the legislature um has settled the statewide budget. So only that number could change, but um I understand her her thinking, playing it safe. Twenty thousand as opposed to twenty-seven thousand. And then on the front sheet, my agenda item summary, you'll notice that there was a scratch off on the check, yes, and the board was off. Mark wasn't here yesterday morning when I came down the hallway, so I when I typed this up, when I came back through, he was there, so I was able to re-mark on this. Okay, and if there's any questions about the program itself, the mentoring program or their budget, uh Daphne's available by telephone. So we can give her a ring if there's questions for her.
I guess my question would be uh, you know, perfect scenario, should JCP be under the mentor program or should it be under? Under mental health?
The funds are to be used for providers for the betterment of our twelve to seventeen-year-old seventeen-year-old population. It could be, we could have it spread out, but um early on, I believe, back in when it was under Commission of Children and Families, I believe they did an RFP, RFQ, uh whatever, whatever it was back then, um just solicit some ideas on how to spend the money. So the board of commissioners back way back when made that determination to split it into three. But then moving forward, they weren't doing work, um so money for nothing, um I I I couldn't put that. And continue to to submit zeros for nothing being done, whereas under the mental health program and Center for Change, whereas uh mentoring program is doing work, right? So um at the time, mental health and uh Center for Change, they weren't real interested in uh, I know, I believe I I looked at the budget, back then it was a couple thousand bucks. Um five, six thousand dollars a year to do the work, so um some of it was normal work and I know a lot of the mentoring programs funded by grants, um.
They're benefiting from it, the kids are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just to ask.
It benefits our kids, not just our kids on probation, but we do have kids on probation, that's what we're involved with the mentoring program. But it also benefits, it's it's countywide. It's countywide benefit because mentoring program is countywide, so um what have you said on the board, Mark?
Yeah, I still on the board for a couple of years, three years. And it's a great program. I just wish we could help them more than we are, but.
So these dollars, they coming back from the state, are these are they still kind of being co-mabled with Central and Eastern Oregon Juvenile Justice Consortium? And then they're allocated out across the seventeen counties?
Well, um yeah, this is allocated out uh amongst thirty-six counties, so all thirty-six counties.
Oh, okay.
It's this, we we are low level, which means our numbers aren't so high, it's all based on
Right.
Population, so the the minimum uh grant allocation is sixty thousand for two years.
Okay.
Um so we need that criteria for a minimum grant um grant allocation.
Gotcha, right.
And I'm assuming all seventeen eastern counties with the exception of maybe Yumatoa County, Wasco and uh Conshews, uh I'm assuming we all probably get the uh very minimum, maybe Union gets a little more based on their population. It's not population that we have on supervision, it's population countywide of our twelve to seventeen-year um seventeen-year-olds, those numbers.
Okay, I was I was curious, just because I was reading through a portion of that where it's it's kinda saying that the budget may allocate uh and allocated by established criteria and across seventeen counties. And then it goes into some specifics in Lake County, but on the next page, it's on page three and the first paragraph there towards the top starts talking about the recidivance, reto- recidis- redid- recidivism.
Recidivism.
Um rate, um but across thirty-six counties.
So whatever you're reading pretty long, um we have uh we have we have two different JCP pots. We have a joint prevention pot for providers, which comes through the uh Oregon Department of Education slash Youth Development Council. And then we have the Oregon Youth Authority Juvenile Crime Prevention Monies, which we utilize. Um there's basic and diversion um dollars that come from um there's basic and diversion dollars that come down from Oregon Youth Authority. So our basic services um is what we utilize. It's uh it's about eight thousand dollars a year, um you ever take, we utilize that to help offset our detention costs.
Okay.
Um and then the Oregon Oregon Youth Authority diversion program, diversion dollars, that's, those are monies used to defer youth from Oregon Youth Authority and to help um pay for services in our community. If each individual county was just allocated their certain funding, um I think ours would probably be about a thou- two thousand dollars by end and a thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Which we couldn't, I mean, that that's one, that's one use for treatment services, polygraph services, stuff that um OHP or private insurance doesn't pay, um that's what that money's geared towards. We we get out of that, we use that up in the probably the first three months we got it. So what we do is COJAC is we we pool all of our money together, so now our pot is this much bigger. And not every county utilized that money um over the years. We've used, we've utilized the heck out of it, um especially with our juvenile sex offender population that we have on probation. Not um not every in, not Oregon Health Plan and not every private insurance will pay for that. But um treatment or polygraphs, so we're able to submit a plan and uh the therapist will submit back to us the invoice for the month. We submit it to COJAC and COJAC cuts the therapist a check, so it's uh it's well worth. So there's two different, there's basic and diversion dollars.
Yeah, no, I actually, that makes a lot more sense to me now, and I actually was misreading several things here. But uh no, that makes a lot more sense. So your recommendation would be that basically we just accept the plan as written?
Absolutely.
Alright, we can end on that tomorrow. Does anyone have any questions? Alright, Jake, you're off the hook it looks like, really appreciate this, appreciate all you do. Next item, pushing to the back of the room, Dave Berman. Good seeing you.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Well, I'm here just kinda to give you a little bit of an update with the landfill. Three-month ordeal, but uh has this week, I officially got a uh email from DEQ stating TCRL is now effective, effectively in compliance. Okay, now that's a pretty big milestone for what we've had to deal with. Uh by effectively, I mean that the construction plan accepted is supposed to go out before work begins. And it'll be a few days until I send the letter, but once the plan accepted letter is sent, then TCRL will be fully in compliance to my knowledge.
Do you mind stating the acronym?
The TCRL Comms Creek landfill, Comms Creek Road landfill. And then and he also says uh he doesn't let me back in. Okay, we we still have to get approval for the construction plan, cause it was, we started construction before it was even approved. We should have never dug that pit, we should have never done nothing, it's there now. It wasn't approved by DEQ, so uh that being said, he doesn't expect an enforcement action in DEQ at this time. But if there is, after the submitting of this plan, if there is enforcement, he will contact me and talk over with me if there is. But right now, there is no fines, so I wanna go back, three months ago, it was put in the paper that the Comms Creek Road landfill was gonna be fined sixteen hundred dollars or what, I can't quite remember how, when it was. Yeah, but there is no fines at this time, right?
Correct.
So I just wanted to clear that with you guys, cause when this all started, it was stated out there.
There was some concern because of the compliance issues that I was seeing, but I think that we've we've amended all those issues now and I think it's a, we're in a good place to move forward.
And then uh that that's huge, I mean, that's
Right.
That's quite the accomplishment for where we were at, cause it was a train wreck out there, I mean, it just, not pointing fingers in the way, it just it wasn't just the county, it was DEQ as well, because they they changed their positions right when we were changing our position, so things got lost, I mean. So what what I had done is I got ahold of DEQ and I just flat told him, so give me a list of what Lake County landfill or Comms Creek Road landfill needs to be in compliance. So he sent me a two-page list, pretty overwhelmed, I wanna take a slide jammer, hit myself in the forehead.
Yeah, but there was, there was more to that story, once he started going through it.
Yeah, but anyway, I think it's a kind of joke, man.
Yeah.
So as far as that, that's huge and then we did our, we done our stormwater uh test, we did our first uh test that everything come back, comes up, no can- contamination. So that was a positive thing, then we'll do another next quarter, you know, for our first quarter of this month, you gotta do it every quarter.
Yep.
And then we uh we finally got the our closure plans on how our closure's gonna look and our elevations for covering the landfill, we, my whole crew's on board with it, they understand it, so we're moving forward. We're starting to cover now, should've been covering a long time ago, but we didn't understand quite how to cover, now we do. So. So I guess now it's just, what questions you have for me? You know, I probably miss some stuff, your concerns about the landfill, so I'll answer them, that's my care.
I don't have any concerns, you're you're doing a very job.
That's scary.
So now he's got a big head, so you guys have.
I don't know, believe me, I hope we still got some work to do.
We do, yeah.
So how's the landfill doing financially?
This year, we made more money than it's ever made since the county's open, we're we're way ahead of our finances than we or our revenue than we thought we were going to be. It's kinda scary, because we're only allowed so much tonnage in that without mining and we're knocking on the door of it, so kinda gotta watch how we do it, that's why I believe we need to go back to the C and D stuff, the construction and the demolition stuff should be separated somehow, I don't know quite where to go with that, because that's taken a lot of our tonnage to put in the ground, into that actual cell. There's the wood products, the telephone poles that are coming in, you know, cause I'm not sure where and when they all decided to just put everything in there, that takes our tonnage into that cell. So it's kinda scary for, cause if we get to seventy-three hundred ton, we gotta put liner in it and then that's costly, so.
Have you done further research or heard about from DEQ on the potential of lining at least one cell? Um we we had talked a little bit about that, I guess, through some of the conversations, some disposal of.
I talked to ODOT yesterday, uh they've been in uh communication with them and it's gonna take a lot. I mean, it's just to do one cell, it's gonna take a lot to get it. We we'd have to write a new plan, cause it has to be in the.
It would have to be in the actual plan.
In the actual plan to, if we tell, and it it depends on the tonnage of of uh carcasses or animal waste that we put in there, it depends on the tonnage.
Right.
I mean, if we did a deer a month, okay, we could probably give away just putting it in our cell, but if it's a deer day, which they're telling me it's a deer day, uh again, we're kinda pushing on tonnage and you know how much goes in there, then if if they wanna start, the farmers and ranchers wanna start putting them in there, well.
Right.
And I still, I got, I haven't gotten nothing back with Todd, he asked from DEQ yet.
Okay.
So that is just something that.
It's out there.
Yeah, it's out there and it wasn't in the plan to line it unless, you know, like I said, if we get to where we're putting more tonnage in there annually, we'll have to line it the next cell.
When, in your discussions with Todd, is it, are you bringing up the fact that just the animals alone would be in their own bit, maybe we could do something like that?
I haven't brought that, I just, I I just got the conversation started, that'll be your conversation I can have. I haven't really took this full on, really pushed it, I just kinda threw it out there. And I can if you guys need me to.
Well, the reason that I'm thinking of it is for when we have the Wolf Committee wanting to put carcasses somewhere. Number two, if we had something in place, a meat processor can come back in to Lake County again and.
Well, it's a little, it's a little bit, what they're worried about, what what they're worried about with animals is more the vectors. The, I'm not saying that we're the vector, and that's where birds come in and take a chunk of meat out and they fly over and it lands in Comms Creek, that's what their main concern is, it is a mess. Butcher waste is more fluting, I know it's a, you know, you got fluted with a dead animal too, so the vector side of things, that's why I, we feel like if we had one deer a month or one deer a week or whatever, that we could get away with that. The vector thing and the liner part, that makes sense? So that's kinda where they're more worried about, putting a lot of animals in our pit, there's birds coming in there and taking it away. You know, and contaminating around this.
Yeah, but I think we could, I think we could cover that with uh cloth, the hole itself to keep the birds out of there, I think.
And then also, where would we put this, where would we put the this special pit with the liner? Cause right now, in our plan of things, you know, we have sixty-six-year plan for cells. So we'd have to figure that out, like I said, we'd have to write up a whole new plan. Not a whole new plan, you'd revise the plan you already have, but we'd have to scrub in.
Yeah.
So it's not subtle, but let me find out from Todd or just, and I'll call other landfills and see what they do.
Right.
You know, I I can do that too, I haven't done that yet, I've got a pretty good relationship with the Creek County guy, so. I will call him and ask him, so well, I know he takes the butcher waste and it's a certain, and they go by the pounds of of any of those dead animals.
But they're aligned length of.
Yes, yes, they have to be.
In order to dump the.
Because they're, we're sixty-five hundred a year, they're forty-three thousand a year, and so they automatically have to. Not cause of butcher waste, they just have to.
Right.
And it's a long time.
Well, appreciate what you're doing out there and uh I think that just exploring that option with the animal waste is worth checking into.
Sure.
And we'll see where it takes us.
Okay, and then I will probably come with you guys on a later date with uh individually, I probably won't do it here, to talk about the C and D stuff to where our tonnage isn't so high. And we still get, we still get the dollars of the tonnage, but it's put in that landfill, it's, we're like I said, we're knocking on that door right now.
Right.
Tonnage wise for annually, if we keep, and also this COVID thing, this last year, a lot of people did a lot of yard work. A lot of debris cleanup, cause they were home, and so we got a lot more tonnage.
We don't burn anymore out there.
No.
They stop that. We can't have any open flame at the.
We might wanna look in to see how we can grind it, stockpile it, and then use it for.
Use it for luggage, yep.
You can use it for cover, you can use it for mulching.
You can use it for the main cover, but you can put it in there and use it for a little bit of the cover and you still have to do your dirt cover, but yeah.
And we're talking about mainly the biomass, the tree branches, leaves and different things like that?
She rock.
She rock, uh branches, lumber, you know, these people that tear down homes coming, cause they they're just filling up our landfill and that's, and it's heavy stuff.
Right.
And it's just on on paper, it just shows our tonnage.
Because ground sheetrock, they use it for soil.
Because they used to separate. I don't know what changed that or I didn't did the research far enough to go. Who changed that? Who decided to put all that in a pit? And there might be a reason why they had to do it. That's why I gotta find out with D Q too, but I don't see. To me, that's just taking our space for our solid waste. And how's. We need the solid waste room.
Wh- what's the status of the compactor?
Uh, the compactor is, I think I went to, each one of you guys told you that we found another issue and it was a little bit more costly than. We first anticipated, but it's still a savings for the long run for us for massive compactor. Uh, granting us some more head problems where they had to put some new seals in if they did. That idea will be there, they said, at least by April first or somewhere in there. It was March fifteenth, since they ran into these. Problems, they push it out a week or two.
Sounds good.
And then we've got a great maintenance program on the equipment now. I've got them doing weekly check, making sure they check the oil. Don't put oil in the wrong spot. Matter of fact, I don't want to put any oil in right now. I do it or I simply already regret getting it. Because I deal with it too much too in two weeks, wrong oil, the wrong hole. It's not good.
Well, thank you, Dave, for all that you've done for us. You've saved our bacon all the time.
Appreciate it.
So what's your biggest challenge right now out there?
Right now, the wind. The pit getting garbage does. Because like I said, where at first it was getting this fine, now it's the spread of garbage, the way they designed that. You know, we get that south wind, well, these big trucks come in here and they dump and it just takes it and sends it nowhere, right to the fence. Right to the fence, over to the fence. You know, I've got crews out there walking our property line fans picking up garbage. And only way we could do it, you know, I've been trying to get them to tip in the tip and shed, but then they fill that box up, so. They're full and then they gotta go down to the box. Well, they dump the box, well, same thing. It's just, okay, do I let sanitation? Fling it all over and we do it, you know, so that's my biggest challenge. I've been working on how to do that. On this next cell, I want to try to maybe put the dump area maybe on the west side of the pit to start out. You could eventually, you have to take that out, move to north, but to get it started, I'd like. Have me pull in and dump from the west side. So if the wind does blow, still blow it down into the pit, the way we're gonna. And then I can sit down and then you guys end up in the show yard map what I'm talking about. That might be something we look at on our next cell.
Be a little more sheltered.
Yeah, we just, if you get that south wind, yeah, still we can get the home that's going to blow it into the pit instead of. In front of the trucks and head north. And then I'm still waiting for parties to get out there to finish covering the old C and D pit and then pulling out and getting. Cell two in the elevation height, still waiting for that. It's just right now, it's so mighty they they just sing. There's no bottom in that, those cells out there, it's just a mud mass. We gotta wait till the dynamite not being killed, you, but hopefully our pit holds up for garbage. The D E Q will be here April fourteenth to inspect, so. Things are due, garbage picked up. I've got guys out there, I want them picking up garbage every day. When the wind's blowing, how many miles now, can't pick up garbage. I mean, I tried and it's just, you don't get nowhere. With the wind and when there's snow, you can go sit there and pick up garbage. If it went out, you gotta go right back to the dig again, so. The winter is tough out there to keep garbage picked up. And then with that wind, it's no, it's fall, it's not, the ice falls, it's snow. It's just, it's the wind. I've tried to take, I've got those cages, those stand up cages, like I'm gonna get. And I'm gonna just try this next week. I'm gonna, when they back up, take those gates and slide them over right next to the truck. Closest they can get without interfering and maybe that'll get some of that too.
If the wind is the wind, it's gonna do what it's gonna do. I remember, no, we're in Summer Lake, of course, we have really bad wind, but I remember. Some years back, we were, I was sitting in the dining room of our house looking out the window and all of a sudden I saw a roof. Go past our property at a good sixty miles an hour, just just. Hitting all the corners on it and it was just on this giant roll through the sagebrush and we eventually found it about three miles away. It is what it is.
I was driving down one forty right through Randy Hill Road. We're driving, I'm heading towards Clam, I'm going to the gun, I was heading that way. Pretty soon, the wind is just blowing us along. I seen a trampoline all across the highway. Same type of thing.
All right. Well, thank you. I really appreciate it, Dave.
And like I said, I'll be in probably in very close another day.
Sounds good.
Do some work. We're not there, but we're getting there.
No, but you always stay in really good contact with us and you always talk to us about a lot of the stuff that you have going on, but. It's good to do meetings like this where the public can get a chance to kind of hear some of this too, so.
We can hear you in there for fun. I'll give you a, uh, we don't have a railroad, well, kind of is a railroad.
We'll have a railroad meeting on Thursday. Okay, sounds good.
And I can give you some more updates on some things, you know, courthouse, stuff we've been doing. I won't get into them like the, we got the grinder all put in. So I'll give you guys some more updates on that on the later day.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Thank you guys.
Um, so we've got a timed item at ten o'clock um for the round of tavern discussion. Was anyone coming for that? Okay, well, I'll hold off and wait till I get here then. Um, we can move on to Oregon Cattlemen's membership discussion.
So I brought, I brought this up. So um. I think it would be good for us to belong to Oregon Cattlemen's Association since. Most of our county is supported by the cattle industry. And I just wanted them to know that we're a part of it. Uh, we want to do everything we can to help. Because the cattle market right now is some of the worst it's been ever. And so I just wanted the county to be a part of it and show support to our community. Throughout the state, so.
I was looking for Amy Hutchinson. Is she coming today?
She's supposed to.
What was it, the year? No, I forgot. They got.
I mean, I might recommend one of you guys have the O D S on, point of contact maybe. Even though the county would.
So that's under associate council on that level, membership level? These are my, what, gonna be my question. I wasn't sure what we'd fall under.
I would, I would recommend one fifty.
I think it's a good idea. I support that. I think you'll want to be contacted if you don't want to be.
And like Todd Nash will be the upcoming president who's commissioned Wild County, so.
Are some of the other counties members, they have memberships there?
I know that years ago, we used to be, I believe, but. I don't know about any other counties, which we'll allow them. The Cardigan gets.
Yeah, I I don't see any issues with it. And the leader council doesn't have any, doesn't see any potential issues or anything? Would you guys like to or just go ahead and kind of, I don't see any issue with like, you were saying Lake County back in the day was a member of it. And as an associate council.
We have not to have any contracts or any name of themselves. Other than memberships, I don't see any for people council, but.
I don't have any problem with it. Uh, we can act on it tomorrow unless there's more questions. Sounds good. Okay. So Amy is the one that's going to be talking about the round of tavern or.
Amy and Francie are supposed to be here and Ken.
Uh, let's go on. Let's knock a few things out. Wolf depredation, uh, compensation committee application. Barry Rodney or Rodney Barry? Sorry, I did the last thing first, first thing, last thing.
So, uh, we needed a person on the committee to replace.
Dan Henderson.
Dan Henderson and suggested Mr. Ferry and he was obliged and had participated well in our Wolf Committee. And this would get him officially on the committee. He provides good input as far as veterinary. Experience plus he's a Catteman himself and had good, good input for.
The only thing, we had this, I was wondering if we can have some of the applicants. Please put on exactly what committee that they want to be on. We always, we have other, but it might be nice. I don't know. This is just for discussion. We could have, you know, specify what committee is it that they're going, that they want to be on. We all know that he wants to be on the Wolf Committee, but there's nothing on here. If you were to go back through records or anything. There's nothing on here to tell someone what committee he was actually wanting to be on.
I think on our other. We need to just put list what that other is.
Yeah, list other.
That's all we'd have to do.
Specify other.
Just put a blank line to the right of it.
And then, because I didn't know what committee route it would be.
I see these other applications.
I've never met Rodney. I just, I kind of figured that's what it was because it had the the Wolf Depredation Compensation Committee application. On the actual agenda. So I figured this is what it had to be because it was an application form. But if someone were to go through old records or something and wanted to see what. Who was on what committees on the actual application, it doesn't actually specify what committees were. So or what committee he's wanting to serve on. So maybe we can make, even make a note on that original or whatever and specify it's for the Wolf Committee. Okay, we can act on that tomorrow if there's no other questions. I just thought for work record keeping, safe, that might be good to have.
Or we could just keep it to where other committees as assigned.
They're they're signed up? We're just gonna write in what we want.
Lucky him.
Yeah, there you go. So next up, um, ASA Advisory Committee applications. I had a, I I think I've got. Almost everyone else that we need on that committee except for the Lapine Doctor. Who is the um, primary care advisor for the north end of the county. And they were going to get him an application and we were hoping to have it back another week.
So do we have somebody on the ASA in Northlake, Eastside, like in Silverlake or Rock area?
So we have Keith Little.
He's Silverlake.
He's Silverlake and we and we have Jamie Roscoe, which is also Silverlake, but they service that area along with the.
But they don't serve the same area as Christmas Valley.
No, they don't. I can't remember exactly where that line is, if Christmas Valley covers for Rock or if Silverlake does. But I know Silverlake goes up north.
I think like for Rock, it's, there's a line right in there somewhere. And I'm not positive where that is.
I was thinking Pitcher Lane was kind of the main dividing line there for the ASA. I have to look at the maps again. But Pitcher Lane goes straight up in between Four Rock. It goes right up through it, so.
I'm just wondering if we need to have somebody from.
What about this Sue Inglesby?
Well, Sue Inglesby is Christmas Valley Director for the A M S. So she covers that area as well, you know. Whatever they're running up through, that's.
Application for her. Yes, last one.
You know what? Actually, I don't have it on here because I forgot. So you have it though. Yeah, I picked it up. I knew she had it. No worries.
I have John Jones, Ross Cowan and.
No worries.
Sue would work.
Okay, yeah. So we have, we have four applicant applications. We have Ross, we have John Jones. Keith Little and Sue Inglesby. I didn't even look at these because I I was the one who um, pony expressed them down here, so. Um, we can act on that tomorrow unless you guys have any questions about any of the applicants. Okay. Also, uh, just as a quick update on that, I believe. Um, Silverlake and Christmas Valley will be giving us their um, request for a letter of support on a variance. The same thing that we did for the ASA down here for their variance so that they can have regular E M Ts or paramedics.
Two.
And advanced life support. Yeah, so they will, each one of the ASAs will be putting in for that request. Now, so we'll be hoping we can do them all at once. And we did have a very good uh, meeting in Summer Lake uh, the other week. Um, Paisley ASA expressed um, their concerns about the the ambulance service area plan. Uh, to reduce it in size. They felt it was too complex and there's too much stuff in it. The problem that uh, Troy and myself, we're kind of looking at is if we start taking things out of that plan. Um, the state's going to potentially refuse it and they're going to want some of those things in because they require us. Some of those things included in the plan. Um, I think a lot of the things uh, that there's concerns about. Can be addressed through their mutual aid agreements. And that brings me to the next point is um. In the past, uh, there has been ASA um. Mutual aid agreements between all four ASAs, but there hasn't been for, I think, twenty years. I hope I'm speaking correctly, maybe plus. Um, but we are in the process of getting uh, the Lakeview Warner Valley ASA. Um, back into the same mutual aid agreement that the other three have with each other. So that they will all be connected and they can all work together and have those agreements between each other.
So do we need to have that agreement with White Party County, Clam County and O Dog?
It's kind of up to them, to they, to the ambulance service provider to, and I think they do have some of those. I think Silverlake has one with Lapine. Um, I think Christmas Valley's had, they they've kind of been on the rocks with um, Lapine and getting an actual. Uh, agreement in place. I can't remember what. What what the status was with that, but um, it's, I I believe it's up to the ASAs to make those agreements. With the other ASAs and other counties. And that kind of keeps us out of it too because they know what they need and they know what their relationships are and they can kind of work together.
We were briefed in Christmas Valley prior to meeting, they stated that when they do an ambulance run, they pretty much have to go to Lapine. Or to Bend every time.
Oh, you had to go away to Bend, yeah.
What that agreement would be with Lapine or whatever.
Yeah, and they they typically are the ones that kind of work those out. They have done a fantastic job for for many, many years. Yeah, and they, they typically are the ones that kinda work those out, they have done a fantastic job for, for many, many years. It's just, uh, it's really good to kinda get everyone back to the table again. Um, all four SAS, ASA is talking, um, but eventually I think that we will be having, uh, we will see all four of our ASAs in mutual aid agreements with each other. And, uh, we'll give this, the full plan for Lake County approved this and off to the state. Once, uh, we can all kinda reach agreement as to what the plan should be. And they'll get it to us for approving and, uh, if there's any concerns we have, whatever, we can go from at that time and then, then we submit it to the state. Or Daniel Tag would submit it to the state because he's the, uh, he's the administrator of the, uh, of the ordinance and the, the plan.
Okay.
All right, uh, last item aside from our discussion, which we could table till tomorrow if they don't, if they aren't able to show up. Uh, Sharon Lightly and Company LLC, uh, ratification. Um, we'd be ratifying this today, correct, Melanie?
Please.
Yes, because I, I think we all had a chance to kinda look over it, I don't see any problem with it. Um, and I think through some of the emails, you guys said the same, so whatever you guys wanna do.
Do you wanna give just a little background on this?
Sure, absolutely.
She did, uh, brief us, uh, last meeting, right? Just follow up, so Sharon Lighty is a grant writer, um, we have needs as a county, different times of the year, uh, for grants to be that we'd like to put in for, she's providing professional services, um, she's used by the library board and other, uh, groups out in the community. And is well respected, does a good job and has pretty good success rate. Therefore, we'd like to, without hiring a person full-time or part-time, this gives us an opportunity to, uh, use her services as needed.
So is I looking?
Well, it's, it's just the ratification, motion to ratify would be what I entertain, um, it's already been signed, so we're good to go.
I'll make a motion to accept the ratification agreement with Sharon Lighty and Company LLC.
Sorry, uh, motion then seconded to ratify the agreement with Sharon Lightly and Company LLC in Lake County. Uh, for grant writing opportunities in the future, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carries. I didn't ask for further discussion, but, um, is there any further discussion?
Negative. Okay, you can put her to work.
Sounds good. Um, with that, uh, we do not have anything else that has been liaised on updates and, uh.
I recommend a five-minute recess.
We can, we can do that, we can take a recess, would you, would you like a fifteen-minute recess? And we'll maybe give our folks a little bit more time to show up. And we can contact them and ask them if, uh.
Somebody just came through.
Let's, uh, we can take a five-minute recess. Oh, hey, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess real quick, man, okay, uh, we're gonna take a quick five-minute recess. And the only.
If you don't mind, super quick.
That's fine.
Okay, five-minute recess, we'll reconvene at ten twenty.
Uh, we have to pace it a bit.
Not, not pacing, but, um.
Um. Right.
Do you want the door shut?
But they'd be looking for.
No, I have another. Just in case.
And that will help, cause we're on DSL, not Silverlake, not Christmas Valley.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and it's, and in Silverlake, it's all there is, is DSL, I mean, we, cause. You know, there's no really interaction, they're, you could do that, you're probably not.
I know, I hear you, that's why I got up earlier and I went to close it, um.
Then Chris, I tell Chris.
Okay. Uh, time is ten twenty, we're gonna reopen session.
Yeah, he, just tell him, we've already, just tell him, circle out.
Um. So, yeah, uh, the first, I, I guess we've only got really one I have left, Roundup Tavern Discussion, Amy.
Okay.
Uh.
Well, I, I was just hoping for an update, I know that Melanie and has been over there talking with Hank, so um, I just wanted to hear what was happening first of all, right?
Right.
And second of all, the, the objective is a youth center, or a youth place. And Roundup Tavern may not be the place, may or not, but it, because no other options.
Mm-hmm, and that comes out of like, we've had kind of a, a youth task force, this like ad hoc that we kinda put together. Um, so it's the library, prevention, OSU extension, the mentor program, youth investment.
School.
The school, and so we kind of, you know, we meet monthly and it kinda grew out of, actually, I started it, I'll be honest, because I was struggling so much at the library. Cause our, our town here has a, a lot of activities for youth, but not necessarily a lot of free activities for youth or activities that are easy for youth who do not have, um, like solid investment from their home life to enable them to be a part of. And so, uh, so we were seeing at the library, a group of kids who are really kind of unserved outside of school. Um, and so, so in, in a problem-solving effort, I was like, okay, let's, let's all talk. And so what kinda grew out of that is this idea that, you know, it would be really great to have a place where we can have programming-type activities that can kind of keep them busy, give them positive activities to participate in rather than kind of, you know, roaming the streets at will, um, and the, the facilities that we do have are a little bit limited, especially right now with the extra restrictions, but even, even without that, like for example, the library, we could do, um, you know, our tables, we could do at most thirty-two at a time for an activity at tables, because that's just how big the room is. Um, the OSU extension room is even a little smaller than ours, so it's kind of like just putting the feelers out there, like where, where could we do this kind of thing, what do you guys see? And how involved do you wanna be in such a, a process?
To help facilitate.
So why the Roundup Tavern?
That was just, it, it's a great size, right? And it's downtown, so it's real easy, walkable to the, from the school and from the neighborhoods. Um, and it's a, it was one big open room and so you could, it, it just kind of was a nice size and shape, really. And it was a great, it was a great old building too, I mean, it had, it has like that kind of charm, like, cause like, one of the things is, you know, I think it's really hard. It'd be a really hard sell to do this type of thing in a dedicated building, so it almost has to be like some kind of mixed-use building, right? And so we've talked about, well, could it be something that is partnered with the school or maybe the alternative school could be in during the day and then after-school programming could happen after school and you can do that with flexible furnishings? Or could it be something like, you know, it was a town building that you could, um, that could be available for after-school programming, but could also be available for community events, so it's got all these long walls, they could do art shows or speakers or people could rent it for graduation parties or weddings, and so it just has that kind of nice aesthetic, it's part of the attraction to that particular building, and maybe that's not the building, but that was to answer your question.
Yeah.
If, if you guys come across ideas.
Well, I mean, the building needs repair, the roof needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, we of course pulled that mural out because of the water damage and everything else that was in the place.
Right.
Um.
So is the mural coming over here then, that the office?
It's, it's here.
Down there.
It's here, oh, exciting, I might have to go wander around, I could ever go down to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, go down the, uh, Oriole Hall, it's up on the wall already.
Nice.
Um, they're still kinda finalizing, you know, trying to get it set up there perfectly and kinda dress it all up, but.
Right.
It's, uh, it's up.
Awesome.
So.
So the, the problem is, is that we all wanna save the Roundup, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Problem is, is that it's gonna cost three hundred and fifty thousand or more to do it. And when Mel and I and my brother went over there to rescue the mural.
Yes.
Water was pouring in from the, from the roof.
Oh. Uh-huh.
The floor, I, being my size, I was afraid because the floor was sagging and so.
Yeah, oh, I've been in there, I can imagine.
So, I mean, if, if we had a magic wand and three hundred and fifty thousand, I would be more than happy to do that. The problem is.
They don't have a magic wand, why?
Well, well, we can.
She might, she, she might have a brainstorm.
We can use the infrastructure money to repair it.
You wanna go for it?
What infrastructure money?
From the, from the US stimulus repair.
Do you wanna use all that money on that?
Interesting, well, and another potential idea is like, what's the minimum that needs to happen to keep the water out in order to gain time to investigate other possibilities?
Well, that was, that was the discussion, you know, a year ago really, and I don't know the minimum's gonna suffice anymore.
Yeah.
Um, I think at this point, we have.
It's more than a tarp joke.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's more than a tarp joke, but it's also probably not three hundred thousand dollars.
It's just.
You're looking at a lot of money, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and at that point, you're kind of, you, you'd probably be better off just replacing the, the roof and doing it, right, the first time?
Right.
Because if we wait too much longer or we can't figure something out, uh, we are at risk of that wall, the walls caving in too and jeopardizing the other structures around it.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And so we really would like to move on it, but it's also on the proposal list, it's ready to be sold, we're limited as to how much we can do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, what's the price down to right now, it's down forty percent, it's just low percent, down sixty percent, two point percent of cost.
Down sixty. And that's, that, that's the, the maximum we can.
Discount.
Drop the cost.
I think it's going to sell probably eighteen thousand if it sells.
By law.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We tried to give it to LCP, we tried to give it to Town of Lakeview.
Right.
Unfortunately, they have the same problem with you. And I'm not here, I'm here to support the planning of youth places.
Yeah, and I just.
So what, what about the memorial hall?
I think that could be a great place for the, for the interim at least, I mean, I don't know if y'all want to hear that coming through the floor, but I mean, I think that could be uh, cause how many square feet is that downstairs?
It's a bunch and it hardly gets used.
Yeah.
That's pretty, it's pretty substantial, it's bigger than the Roundup Tavern in my opinion.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Is it, it's more than two thousand and thirty feet, oh, yeah, I mean, it's, this was thirty, it would be like probably not thirty-two hundred because there's the kitchen and the restroom in the lobby, but we were thirty-two hundred when we were over here, so it would be, yeah.
Right. It's, it passed that wall basically and all the way to the other side.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, I guess it would be basically.
Well, yeah, and then there's like the veteran's office, so there's just like a little bit of chunks taken out, but still, that's probably, I mean, easy, at least twenty-five hundred square feet.
We have the exhibit buildings at the fairgrounds that we can use.
Well, the only thing about that is then you have transportation issues to go back and forth, but this is, I mean, this would be also walkable. Um, and so, um, I think that could be a great place to get started for sure and then see how, how much interruption, I mean, running people around.
Well, yeah, most of your activities are gonna be after school.
Yeah.
And so.
It's not the whole day long.
Yeah, and most of us won't be here that time, you know?
Yeah.
So.
I could use help for student transportation, spending those dollars too.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I mean, your turn to ready.
Yeah.
Down below.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking big, big work.
Yeah, well, and I think that in, like, I have two purposes for being here, so one is this with the videos that are, but I also just have a soft spot for that Roundup Tavern, so I just wanna urge, if there's any way we can save it rather than let it be demolished, I would really like that.
It was the first place I brought a legal adult.
Really? See, now that's a good memory.
You specified the legal part, I thought that, opening up the first time you had an adult ever.
I also had that same thought, so, yeah. And so then if we were to use your space, like what are, are there like paper gifts to fill out, are there special rules, are there? So we can talk later, we're not gonna take that time up now.
While we're on the sceptic of, we need it here for the disadvantage.
Yeah.
I, I'm a mentor myself and the young guy doesn't have things to do, which means they find other things to do.
Yeah.
Uh, Christmas Valley also needs, so just for you back if you might, if something pops up during the course.
They need a facility or they need a?
They, they need something for youth activity, same as we do here.
Yeah, more, I think programming specifically.
Now, the old lover mind of the pro build, that could be a basketball court inside too.
It totally could, it's got the space, or maybe not the height.
But kids are vertically challenged anyway.
Yeah, yeah, well, and our, like, kind of our, our target range of age has been sort of from like mid to upper elementary through middle school in, in the activities we've done kind of so far, because those are the ones that seem the most, the most at loose ends when they don't have strong family support at home, so.
Yeah.
So you, are you gonna work with Jim Nichol?
Yeah, Jim's a part of our group, yeah. Yeah, and we actually, I don't know if he's told you guys, but we're doing a, a, a youth leadership summit this, or Francie's told you guys, yeah, we're doing a youth leadership summit this summer up at Cottonwood, which is actually for high school kids. Um, and it's coming, you know, the budget's coming out of prevention dollars, but it's a little bit in part that same target audience, but just a little older and to get them involved in, um, having a voice around, I mean, it's problem gambling money, so there will be that vein of it, but also like, you know, kind of be in a place where everyone that's around who is positive. And where you can learn some new skills and how to be active and engaged in your community in a way that can be positive and make a difference, so that's coming up this July, so, um, I'll encourage, um, Francie to talk to you about transportation dollars though, because
Yes, please.
she, she was kind of still chewing on that particular problem, so I'll send her an email.
Thanks.
What are you thinking about transportation to like the fairgrounds or?
I don't care.
She's like, I'm thinking about driving people around.
I have to spend one percent of my STIF funds on student transportation.
Oh, on student transportation specifically?
Is it at least one percent or, yeah?
So.
And with COVID, it's been a little bit of a challenge, like we've sponsored differently Easter trips and things.
Yeah.
But I'm glad to help out.
Yeah, cause this one, the Youth Leadership Summit is actually countywide, so it would be some people coming down from Northlake and Paisley and then Lakeview out to Camp Cottonwood, so it could be, uh, it could eat up some money for you.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah. And it would be July, so it would be after this fiscal year end, unless you could.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Camp Cottonwood's a great spot to have that.
Yeah, we're really excited, I think it's gonna be really fun, like, um, Jim and Brienne and we're talking about like different, you know, Dutch oven cooking and things we can do around the campfire. Um, we're hoping to rent maybe some paddle boards, there's definitely canoes out there, maybe we can rent some mountain bikes up to come up one of the days and then a lot of kind of, um, workshop activities about, you know, like, learning kind of who you are and where you have spheres of control in your own life and, um, positive behaviors, like some brain development and techniques that you can use for.
I could use some of that.
Right, do you need to come, Mark? It would be fun. So I think it'll be really fun, it'll be a nice mix and it'll be, um, a good experience for the kids, which is what it's all about, so hopefully it'll be successful. We'll see, it's our first run out of the gate, so I don't, I don't know exactly how it's gonna go, but.
And I have to go to something, my interest in the youth aspect is not just that they are youths, but they're people who will be sitting in your seat tomorrow, uh, leaders of tomorrow, so that we can promote them today their benefits tomorrow.
Yeah. So it's settled then, uh, you're gonna scrounge around and find that three hundred thousand or repair the roof on the Roundup then?
I've been looking, I've really been looking.
I don't know, I heard that the library's got tons of money.
I know, right? Totally, it's just coming out of our ears, we don't know how to spend it.
Sorry, that probably was too much.
Three hundred fifty is, I'll, I'll change the sceptic a little bit, if we've kind of qualified.
Yeah, I'm done.
If you've got three hundred fifty thousand, we'll put the five hundred thousand for another project also.
Since we're chucking money.
Since we're chucking money out.
As, as you know, we got internet out of Warner Valley.
Yeah.
Still working on, uh, cell phone service plus.
Mm-hmm.
The next devastated area we're working on is Summer Lake.
Between Paisley and Christmas Valley area going all the way up.
With the, our deal, we have funds, but those funds are for a residential hookup. hookup. Picture Rock Pass is not a residential hookup.
Mm-hmm.
But we need that for redundancy.
Mm-hmm.
And we also need it for bandwidth capacity increase. And working with two different entities, who's probably all but, because they're negotiating, I hate to say it, but I think that's just still negotiating. But you know who they are.
You don't have to then, yes.
If the cost of a million bucks to come over for one company, they may be willing to provide the second company to put a condo in. If the second company split the cost, let's say hypothetically, a million bucks to come over, the other company needs five hundred thousand. Five hundred thousand is not part of the grant that you receive from FCC.
Yeah.
So we're looking at what entities can contribute a little bit, nobody can contribute five hundred.
Yeah.
But if you know of entities, like I'd be contacting the State Interoperability Emergency. Uh we're also working, going to work with a consultant. But uh bandwidth and redundancy, because as you know, what we have now is two dead-end fibers.
Yeah.
One in Christmas, one in here.
Paisley or Christmas Valley.
And we was able to get some bandwidth out of Central Lake back in two thousand and fifteen, but that's been eaten up. As technology enhances, bandwidth demand increases. So both redundancy and bandwidth is critical for our county.
Mm-hmm.
So if you know of different little pots of money.
Well, I know Governor Brown has legislation funding for equity and a lot of that's going towards.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rural access. Um I talked to.
Five hundred thousand is a impound from that, though.
So.
But a part.
Yeah, and I talked to Annette Leva about the new federal um internet access funding that was just um approved. And she is going to keep me in the loop and so hopefully we can become a community partner and hopefully we'll get some money here for that too.
Yeah, but as county commissioners, we carry a lot of weight in soliciting other partners
Mm-hmm.
or adding up extra amount of dollars.
We've heard that, you know, from Senator Wagen's group, whatnot, this is, this is big. And you know, there's gonna be opportunity out there, I think, in the future. They're gonna push for more and more opportunities for rural, again, it's it's important on their list, so.
And I think getting that that last piece of connection is really critical, because then instead of having two dead ends, if one end goes down, we can pull from the other end, you know, so like right now, if the line between us and Clement gets cut, we're in S O L till they get that sucker repaired, whereas if we were connected, we could pull from the north rather than the south in those situations, so I think it's.
And it can go, it can go multiple ways. Right now, if you're going through fiber to school in Paisley, it comes down to Lakeview, shoots over to Clement, goes all the way up. And if you just wanna get it to Christmas Valley from Paisley, it goes all the way up ninety-seven, cuts over and comes back down to C V, and that's uh quite a few weak points in there, so.
Exactly, and I think.
And we don't have the bandwidth.
Yeah, we just don't, right?
And I think it's an economic development issue too, right?
Absolutely.
We can't provide those.
Yeah, it's not just.
Constant, reliable, strong connection.
Right.
Difficult to encourage businesses to in the.
And we were really hoping back two thousand nineteen, twenty, maybe there'd be some opportunity with Zayo and seeing if we could break out because they're bringing that fiber down, but there really just isn't, that's not where we're gonna get that redundancy.
But that's one player that may share the trench.
Because of nagging.
Yeah.
Well, I I know.
It's good nagging, I encourage that.
Well, we've we've all, we've been on those committees, we've been talking to Zayo for, you know, since what, late two thousand nineteen?
Uh I was talking to him back seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah. Right.
And I know the Flash President. And he's supportive, but he's not the ultimate decision maker. But it comes down to sharing costs, that's what Zayo was about.
I'm glad to hear there's some opportunities in the pipeline too, that.
Right, and I think, you know, there's there's some opportunities with Starlink and everything else that hopefully we'll be able to.
Mm-hmm.
But that won't.
Bring some service to the county, but rural areas.
Starlink can another of help with the additional rural homesteads.
Right, because there's no way of getting fiber to a lot of the homes, Lake County regardless, but as far as creating an inter- internet redundancy, that's a, that's a connectivity issue between Christmas Valley and Paisley.
Mm-hmm.
And it's only ten miles. The thing is, for another company to put on a trench in, that'd be cost prohibitive, million bucks, because you don't get a return on redundant pipe over Picture Rock Pass, so. And we need the, today, we got, like I mentioned earlier, back in two thousand fifteen, we got Central Lake to boost our bandwidth, that really helped because that provided opportunity to go to Paisley and Warner Valley. But as technology just keeps expanding, bandwidth capacity is in greater and greater demand, so.
Are you hearing?
And we can.
Are you hearing anything about satellite?
Uh we're low on elevation satellites, yeah, more was mentioned earlier.
Starlink, yeah.
Uh that's they're still testing, they're getting better and better.
Somebody just shot some rockets last week down there.
That was them.
Yeah, that was SpaceX.
SpaceX, but that, that's more for dispersed, but it's not for redundancy.
Right, yeah.
And it's not for capacity. Bandwidth.
It might help moderate, you know, if more people use that service, it takes the.
Right, it'll take pressure off the the infrastructure and everything else. I mean, we were talking about.
Right. But none of it solves the redundancy.
Yeah, they were talking about a hundred and fifty gigabytes per second, I think, on Starlink uh about a year ago. Now they're talking by the end of twenty twenty-one, they're expecting up to three hundred gigabytes per second, download upload speeds, uh which is pretty significant, being that the best internet in Lakeview right now is between four to five megabytes per second. Um it's uh pretty substantial. Um.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, satellite internet's been around for a long time, but it's been very high, highly complex, large satellites, just a couple of them up in the, up in the sky. Uh but then, you know, now they're looking at a network of hundreds of them, thousands. Uh so it.
But they have a shorter lifespan than fiber, so.
Mm-hmm.
But fiber is the ultimate that we need redundancy and capacity.
Just for simple things, you know, even like our hospitals being able to get x-rays to places and then to youth county or whatever.
And.
Our schools, remote schooling.
Exactly, and I think that's gonna be, I mean, this is my, if I can predict the future, which I am not psychic, but I feel that the kind of the direction it's heading, this fiber is that core trunk for institutions to ensure that they can conduct their business, that they can serve the public, and then the satellites like a consumer layer on top.
Right.
That's how I kind of see it playing out. So it's important that we have both, both sides.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, when my wife quarantines me out to my property along the flesh cut off, will tell, will require satellite.
Right, goes right up, right, like.
But hospital needs hardcore fiber.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, they can't put a line on satellite.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, and the libraries and you guys, you're in the building, the schools.
Yeah, facilities and institutions, yeah, they'll be mainly centered on the, on the grid.
Mm-hmm.
But.
If you have knowledge or influence, nobody come up with five hundred thousand, but somebody can. But if you know of different entities, they can contribute.
Yeah, I know we don't, we don't have five hundred thousand we can contribute to this right now.
But we may have fifty.
Right.
It's getting kind of tight this year. But anyway, I appreciate you guys coming in.
Yeah.
Uh youth is tomorrow's leaders.
Yeah, and I appreciate helping us find a a place to start.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, no, I think the Memorial Hall would be a good place to start for now, but I, we're definitely still looking for opportunity and direction for what we're going, what's gonna happen with Roundup Tavern.
Yeah.
But it's uh is concerning. We all wanna preserve that, that.
Right.
It's not simple.
I know, I I recognize, it's a complex project and just I'm
Very costly.
Here to stay, we all love it, and if there's a way to work through those complexities, that'd be awesome.
Absolutely, yeah.
Real familiar, just like, I never had a bigger beard there.
I never had anything there, it's been closed the whole time I've been here.
We have back doors.
Back doors, we all go in and it should have a part.
Right.
Alright, time is.
A hundred dollars admission for everyone we can.
Ten forty-five, um with nothing further to come before us, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting unless you guys have anything. Um alright, ten forty-five, meeting adjourned, thank you, Amy.